Oh, because he wants to know. Oh, sweet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
A lot of really amazing things. It was interesting listening to the people from here.
I mean, he sounds good.
Carl.
Hello, we're Carol.
Hello, it's Carol.
The guy that put the people who's just.
The guy that put the people who's just.
Phenomenal.
Yeah.
Laurie Solway.
You didn't mention that, right?
Yes.
The last time I did this was in 2016.
Why did you remember that? I forgot about it.
Says this was when?
Oh, it's August. Yeah. Oh. No.
Right. It's nothing much. Just like. Hold on. She has somebody's pussy for her.
Done.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah. Eric. When you come up. Okay. Cheers.
Oh.
No, yes, last night.
Oh. Hopefully, he sensed what the call. You're there too much.
I don't have anything. Do you want to forward it to you? I'll forward it to you.
Sure. I just wanted to see if this is there.
I don't. I don't have it. 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 Sure. I just wanted to see if this is there. I took this one.
I don't.
I don't have it. 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 Yeah. Yeah. And then I can't hear. I can't hear. I think if you don't play, they could only say. Okay. Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. Yes. Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Despite that. Okay. So we've come very. Yes. 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 Yes.[385.11]
When you can meaningfully be planning and executing those strategies. So, I want to thank Eric for the work that he's been doing. You know, he's in our Office of School Support under Jackie Peterson's guidance in that office. And this is, I think, our first real look at the work we have ahead of us in the upcoming school year. So, thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Yeah, over the last year, as I've been working through this skip process, I've come to refer to myself as the skip wrangler. And I thought about coming out tonight with my little cowboy hat on, you know, get along and all those things. But, yeah, it's been a great process. And as Dr. Pikel said, what I'm really excited about is that in previous years, we'd be gearing up to begin the data retreat, the goal planning process, and maybe the next week or so. And we're at a point now where our buildings are in go mode. They are working towards implementation, and that's just so exciting to see. So... So, as Dr. Pikel was sharing, really, the skip process takes elements of the strategic plan to the building level. And over the past year, our buildings have been really looking inward, focusing on what their priorities are. And as we've gone to those DISCs, those district initiatives or strategic change that are our priority ones, when we began the skip planning process in early June, that was a time for the buildings to look at where they're at and make decisions about what their focus area is going to be. So, the required skip goals that all buildings are doing across 31 different sites. We have one around MTSS, building that multi-tiered support for literacy, so specifically for literacy. And the other one is around deeper learning. And that's one where all of our buildings are in a learning area right now about the deeper learning process, and they're going to be jumping in headfirst next week with a deeper learning day. We did have additionally four recommended goal areas, one around mental health, one around post-secondary pathways, family engagement, and restorative practices that buildings could elect to adopt as additional goals. And we, as you'll see once we get into the breakdown of where schools are at, some buildings chose to take on multiple recommended goals, and others said, no, we really want to focus on the two main goals this year. We're really going to make literacy our thing. We're going to start thinking about deeper learning, but we're going to get to these as well. Ultimately, I think we'll see all of our sites working through all of these goal areas. So, the way the process looked over the last year, when we had our skip planning sessions last year, building leaders worked really hard to put together teams. And throughout the school year, as we went in buildings and met with leaders and met with the skip teams, we said, make sure you really have the right people on your teams. Make sure you're bringing the right players of expertise, the right voices, so that everyone's being heard and everyone's part of the process. And so, the teams have really evolved over the last year. If you look at them now, you're going to see principals, assistant principals, but you're also going to see counselors, social workers, you're going to see instructional and success coaches, you're going to see regular ed classroom teachers, as well as special ed teachers, our equity specialists, and our ESPs are other voices that are really an important part of these teams as well. You know, the other thing that's important to note is the teams range anywhere from eight to 10. That was where we told them they could be. And the interest around these teams has really exploded. I was working with an elementary school. When we first talked about the process, there were no hands going up. So, I went up to the site, and I talked with the teachers and the staff, and I said, guys, this is what we're doing. This is the work. We talked about MTSS, what it would look like in their building. We talked about what deeper learning would look like in their building. And now, we're in a situation where they were told they had stipends for eight people. They have like 12 or 13 people who are all fighting to be on this team. And this is because they know it's the important work that they want to do. So, really, really excited. Teachers are very interested in being part of the skip process. Jumping ahead, when we talk about what it looks like, we provided templates this year with prescribed goals, initiatives, and action steps. So, the wording, the wordsmithing was done for them around what the goal might look like. And it was time for them to really think through the hows and how they were going to get to this goal and successfully implement it. Here's a sample initiative that would follow that goal. So, one skip goal might have multiple initiatives. These are the critical elements that they need to take in the building to make these things happen. So, at the elementary level, was we're digging into literacy, we're really focusing on using FastBridge and EduClima. And so, here are the initiatives that we're working through within that to really get this literacy goal off the ground and rolling. Within that initiative, we have multiple action steps. And you can see they're really, really getting to the finer pieces. Now, these are the major details. This is the work that's happening in the classrooms and across the buildings in order to make this goal be successfully implemented. Within each of those templates, then, the skip teams are looking to say, who's going to be the point person for this initiative? Who's going to be the point person for this action plan? And they're going to put a name to that right on the goal template. So, there's a certain level of accountability for the team, for the whole school, and making sure that that action step and that initiative is successfully completed. They're also going to be putting a completion date on there to really hold themselves firm to, this is when we're going to get this done by. We're going to get committed to making this happen. And that's what teams have been working through over the past summer. We did also provide teams with a latitude to develop their own additional goals if they choose to do so. We did have two teams that did that, and I could talk more about that later. As we look at what the process looked like, so now, we've got these prescribed goals, these prescribed initiatives, and we've got these actions. Everything's put into place for them. The conversations that are happening within the skip teams is really about the how. Okay, at our building, how are we going to make this happen? What steps are we going to take? Who's going to do this? When's it going to happen? What does this look like? What supports do we need? What pieces do we need to rethink to make this work at our building? And as you can see, what our building leader said is that really changed the flavor of the process. And I can tell you, you know, as a building principal, you know, I've sat through many, many data retreats. We spend a lot of time thinking about, well, what's the most important thing? Well, no, is that the... And there's a lot of arguing, and there's a lot of time spent, well, we need to fill in this blank here. What's the sense that would be best for that? How does that describe? The wordsmithing becomes cumbersome. The time gets spent in ways that might not be the most appropriate, because you're thinking through details in the wordsmithing that isn't really about the learning or the implementation that's going to happen. And so, the focus has really changed within the skip teams to, okay, what are we doing? How are we going to get it done? When is it going to be done by? And people are moving. Once each skip team met, and they all met either June 9th or June 12th, or all of our buildings met on June 9th, except our high schools were preparing for graduation, they met on Monday afterward. When that day was over, they're required to submit a rough draft of their goal plans. And so, I went through and collected all those, and then I sent them via Google to our DISC leaders for feedback. And we were able to do a very robust feedback process, just using Google Comment as the feature. And it's been really interesting throughout the summer, because anytime anyone places a comment on any skip goal in the district, I get an email notification. And so, as you can imagine, my inbox has been really, really large this summer, but it's been so much fun to see. Even this afternoon, there were two different buildings who were really working hard on their skip plans, and they're going back and forth with DISC leaders. And the conversations were pretty intense. And they're asking really specific details and getting incredibly specific feedback. And you can see people say, oh, thanks, that changes my thinking about this. We're going to go in a different direction. Thank you. But it's very, very timely, and people are moving, and that feedback piece has been so critical. We've had other opportunities where we said, ooh, wow, what is this? This goal may be, or this action set doesn't make sense. The way you're planning it, let's call a timeout. Let's get a meeting together. And we bring in members of the skip team with the DISC leaders, bring them together, and find ways to make some clarity happen. We did that on a number of occasions, and that has also been really, really helpful. But the other piece that's really important to note is, as I said, the feedback isn't a one-time deal where you just get some comments on a Google form and you're done. Principals, other skip team members are replying within Google and going back and forth. And this has been going on from June 15th to today, August 1st, and will continue through the next several weeks. So, the feedback is completely continuous. Here's a little bit of what our timeline looks like. As you can see, we started with the skip planning on June 9th and 12th. We went through the feedback process throughout all of June. Once July came around, people started responding to that feedback. We're now in that stage where we're beginning to finalize skip plans. We're coming up on a leadership day next week, which I'm going to talk about momentarily, where all of our building leaders are really going to be workshopping and putting the final twists on their skip plans. And then, August 28th, as we prepare to start school, we are all moving to implementation. So, again, this time last year, we hadn't even done any planning yet. Now, we're moving towards implementation, and we're weeks and weeks ahead of schedule. Next week, we have our district leadership day, something we've always done every year, having a district day law retreat for administrators. This year, the focus is on skip. The DISC leaders are going to be conducting breakout sessions. All the building principals and assistant principals, directors, will all be attending. They're going to be spending time getting last-minute details from the DISC leaders. If there's new resources we've been able to put in place over the summer, we can talk about those. There's also time for them to workshop their skip plans with other building principals. They've been working as a team this summer, but they haven't come together with other building leaders. So, this is that opportunity to do that as well. Maybe they can find ways to partner as well. So, again, this is professional learning for all of us as building leaders, as district leaders, around how we can make the skip process better and how we can help successfully implement these goals in all of the buildings. One of the things that I'm going to be working on during that day is I'll be leading a breakout myself around implementation, but also about removing barriers. One of the most important questions we're asking our building leaders and our skip teams, what is it you need from us? What things are in the way? What are the roadblocks? And how can we help remove them? Now, I don't have a magic wand where I can fix all those hurdles right on the spot, but the idea is that we can collect, what are these major barriers? Bring them back. DISC leaders, district leaders can get together and say, okay, how can we help refine the process? Move these resources along, put pieces into place to help support our skip teams across the district in order to make sure they can successfully implement these goals. Communication, we want to make sure that everybody knows what's going on in each school, and that's school community-wide around the skip plans. So, during Back to School Week, we'll be sharing skip plans with all members of the staff. It's going to be a very critical element that everyone in the building knows what's going on with the skip plans, and they may know what, they may need to know what their role is. And then, we're also going to be posting these to each school's website, so the entire school community knows what's going on, what are the priorities for each building. The way things fell apart, or fell out in terms of skip goals, in case you're wondering what that looks like, we have 31 sites, all of them, whether they're a middle school, an elementary school, a high school, all of our specialized sites, they all have a goal around MTSS, specific to literacy, and a goal around deeper learning. Beyond that, here are some buildings that are doing restorative practices as a focus area goal. We have other buildings that are focusing on mental health as one of their recommended Family engagement, and in fact, John Adams just added a family engagement goal through their second skip day. So, now, they're taking that on as well, so we can add them to the list. That's it.
Superintendent? Board members? Director McLaughlin.
I'm just curious, because the MTSS is kind of a newer concept for me, but I would expect, and correct me if I'm wrong about this, that its MTSS goals about literacy are probably more in line with what elementary schools have been doing previously. I'm curious to know how the middle school, high school are engaging with that goal and how that's going.
That's a great question. And I'm not the MTSS expert, but I can tell you that a big piece of it right now is putting the structures into place to support it. You know, having been a middle school principal, having been a high school principal, the focus hasn't always been specific to literacy. I can tell you, high school teachers typically say, well, we don't teach literacy, but we all teach literacy. So, we want to make sure the supports are in place, processes are in place, and we're starting to think about, what does this look like at the middle level? What does this look like at the high school level? And making those pieces happen.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, just to build on that, it is a fantastic question, Director McLaughlin. For the year ahead, as Eric said, a key piece is going to be putting in place the teaming structures. A second piece is actually administering the assessments to identify where kids are in reading. Because, as Eric said, most high school, you know, English Language Arts teachers correctly don't see themselves as reading teachers in a traditional sense, and most high school assessments have not been sensitive to specific actionable data on reading levels. And so, we are using FastBridge assessment at the middle and high school levels. We piloted the pre-ACT at Century as well, and we'll be looking at that. So, a key thing in the year ahead with literacy at the secondary level is just going to be understanding with precision where our kids are in literacy. And that's going to be really, really critical. If the experience that I've had elsewhere proves true, we are going to identify a significant number of middle and high school students who are really struggling readers. And that, of course, will lead to the question of what do we do about that? And that's where the Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions that are part of the MTSS framework are going to be our task to put in place over the next several years. As you note, that is more familiar territory to elementary schools, but it's also new terrain for a lot of our elementary schools. One critical thing we're not undertaking at the secondary level next year in literacy that we are at the elementary level is strengthening that Tier 1 curriculum for all kids. That is our, one of several major FOCI for elementary schools next year. It is an urgent priority, including selecting a grade 3 to 5 reading curriculum once the state of Minnesota releases the list. That is really the work a year from now for middle and high schools, to take a look at the caliber and relevance of the curriculum at middle and high school for that Tier 1 literacy instruction. But first, we got to know where our kids are, and we have to build the teams that can guide the development and identification of those kids for interventions.
And just to follow up on that, what can families expect in terms of the timeframe at the secondary level? Like, when they'll be through the assessment and have some data on their kids?
Last year, we did two assessments of FastBridge. I would like to move us to three. It was walking before we run, and of course, we had a little cyber attack, but we still managed to get that assessment done. We will be looking at that assessment window. Our elementaries are all doing three assessments. And then, we would be able to share that data with families both during conferences. And one of the things we've been talking about is using... EduClima really is a data analysis platform, and so, it's going to allow us to have a dashboard for every school starting in the fall, where people will be able to go look at those FastBridge results for the school as a whole. That won't be your kid's data, but we do need to find ways to share with parents and caregivers how their kids are doing. We're doing that right now when a kid is identified for some type of service with a lot of fidelity. So, certainly, of course, special education services, but also just, we're going to give you some time with a reading specialist. We need to be able to share those results with all families so that they have some sense. And FastBridge also has a mathematics assessment as well. So, it's going to be an important priority going forward. I would like to see three assessments at the secondary level. Our high school and middle school principals made a very valid point about time, even though the FastBridge assessment is quite brief and user-friendly, it's still time away from learning. So, we need to make sure that we scope that right in the next year.
Is that the kind of information they'll then be sharing with their families, is how often and kind of what it looks like?
We definitely should be sending that out at the school-wide level. And I just, being conservative here is just, we're asking, the same teachers that we're asking to provide all the instruction to be sharing this information. And so, it's a really timely thing to remind us of thinking about the family engagement part of the FastBridge strategy. So, I look forward to, you know, we'll be, we'll be coming back to the board in the fall with an update on our literacy plan in general. And I think this is a really good thing for us to do some thinking on and bring back to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, I will leave it to my teacher colleagues to comment on this if they'd like, but I think in all the years that we've seen our efforts to improve curriculum and instruction, the thing that has impressed me the most about hearing from the schools over the past year of their skip presentations, and then hearing how this process has evolved, is that it's in the hands of the people who know the work the best. The fact that you, an experienced principal, are leading this work, the fact that the people who are on this team are leading it with the guidance of the DISC, the district level DISC leaders, I think, I think we have to emphasize that, because we saw it in our, in our skip presentations. The people who came to our table were the people who do it every day. And it's, I'm looking forward to seeing the more details, because I think that the details of the plans are going to reflect that as well. And I know that we have some more skip presentations scheduled between now and the end of the year that, as I understand, are going to reflect these new goals for this year. So, we'll be able to follow the process from where you've taken it to now the implementation in the building. So, thank you, thank everyone for their leadership on this, because I like, I like that everybody's hands are in it, and that feels different.
Director Workman.
Your last comment, you like that everyone's hands are in it, and I think that's really crucial, because that gives the people who are doing the work the agency. And they will then feel more empowered to follow through in terms of not only their responsibilities, their commitment, and, quite frankly, their excitement at seeing these plans not only implemented, but also beginning to bear fruit. And I think that's just really awesome, that we have a balance between the district level and what sites are doing, and responding to the teachers and educational support professionals who are in the classroom. So, thank you for that.
Any else, board members? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Our next item is 7.1, draft superintendent goals for the 2023-24 school year. This is an item in preparation for action at the August 15th meeting. Superintendent Pikel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. This is a brief overview of some information that is included on the board website, symboli in greater detail. But in talking with the executive committee, our chair and vice chair, we decided that broadly defined, we want to retain the core structure for my goals that we used in the previous school year, which is to say, a component that focuses on leadership, how well I'm providing that leadership for the district, and then, a component that focuses on outcomes. Are we beginning to see improvements in the indicators of student learning and other important priorities that show up in quantitative data? The timelines for those two components, because we receive data at different times, would, again, be somewhat different. The summer evaluation would focus on the leadership component, and in the fall, when we are sure we have the data from all of the indicators of our performance as a district, we would conduct the outcomes component. So, for the leadership component, we are proposing that we set a goal of at least 70% of the initiatives, and Eric was just describing what we mean by an initiative. It's what some people might call a strategy for improvement. At least 70% of the initiatives that are in our district-wide initiatives for system change are implemented on time and effectively. Of course, I'd be aiming for 100%, but we're a big school district, and stuff is going to happen. And so, 70%, I think, is an ambitious goal, to say that as we, for instance, roll out our new family empowerment program, or as we administer the FastBridge assessment, or as we begin to measure student experience of deeper learning, all of those things are happening on the timelines that are included in our skip plans. So, the first goal is really an implementation goal for the nine priorities that this board approved and talked a lot about in the previous school year. And those are deeper learning, multi-tiered systems of support in literacy, restorative practices for discipline, school start times implementation, community partnerships, leadership development, post-secondary pathways, mental health, and family engagement. Goal two would focus on the next wave of our system design work, which would be developing similarly ambitious but achievable plans in the remaining area of our, remaining areas of our strategic plan, which would include redesign of our funding formulas and systems, our, what I call our human capital strategy, focused on both recruiting, inducting, supporting staff across all of our areas, job categories. Three is supporting the board's work to review and revise policies to advance equity. Four is developing plans to elevate and encourage youth voice and youth leadership. And then, finally, addressing the system obstacle we face in Rochester of getting families, especially low-income families, to our early childhood program sites, where we have wonderful programming, we have actually got capacity in, in many of those programs, and we have a huge challenge with helping families who lack transportation get to those programs. So, the quality of the plans we develop in those five areas would be my second big goal. And as you did last year, the board would evaluate the degree to which the plans we produce are smart plans, reflecting good goals that are measurable and time-bound. And then, the third of the leadership goals would be, once again, using the framework for superintendent leadership that was developed by the Minnesota School Boards Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, which we used for my evaluation that we've just conducted. It's nice in some ways to not change the goalposts year to year. I think we had a really good discussion. There was some very encouraging things, or some things that I want to work in, work on in that framework, and so, we would retain that framework for another year and continue to think about how it can align with the new leadership frameworks we're going to be rolling out also for school principals and district administrators this year. But in this area, we're actually a year ahead on the superintendent front from where we are with district administrators and principals in terms of a framework for leadership and evaluation. Then, finally, for the 23-24 school year, the set of outcomes that I'm proposing and that we talked about with the executive team and chair and vice chair endorsed, would focus on four quantitative goals, the first of which would be on deeper learning. And the goal is that 85% of the participants on our deeper learning teams, which, as Eric said, will begin their work next week with a deeper learning design day, will report that they understand the three elements of deeper learning that are at the core of our framework, which are mastery, identity, and creativity, and they are confident that they can integrate those elements into their teaching, or if they're not a teacher, they work with other students. So, the first goal really is a teacher capacity building goal. Do our teachers feel that they are, that are on these teams, that they're prepared to begin to bring deeper learning to life for kids in an even more intentional way? The second goal would focus on multi-tiered systems of support in literacy, and that would be judged by the percentage of students who meet the criteria for on track on the FastBridge assessment in grades 2 to 5. And the goal would be 3.5 percentage points, which is, generally speaking, across the district, certainly statistically significant. It would depend on if that level was statistically significant at an individual school, but it's safe to say that that would be at the district level. The third goal would focus on restorative practice, and that would be approaching, and of course, we had a very good discussion at the last meeting of our discipline data, reducing the number of Level 2 disciplinary infractions. So, there's infractions that are not something a teacher deals with in the office, something that does involve administration, but not a suspension. Reducing the number of Level 2 disciplinary infractions that occur during the school year by a statistically significant amount over the number that occurred during the 22-23 school year. And then, finally, a goal that would focus on our, our post-secondary pathways work that seeks to build on the progress that we have made in graduation rates, significant progress in the previous year, so wanting to increase the percentage of RPS students overall, or students in at least two democratic subgroups that graduate in four years in the class of 24, 2024 compared to the class of 2023. So, those are the proposals, and obviously, we're not looking for board action at this meeting, but we will be at the next meeting. I will say, in keeping with the theme that we just heard Eric talk about from our school improvement planning process, we actually had a discussion last summer of my goals, but you formally approved them in November. And so, once again, I think this year, we're front-loading things in a good way, and I look forward to having some finalized goals before the start of the school year this year.
Board members, any questions? I think it's also good to clarify that even though your evaluation happens, we have a mid-year conversation, and then, we have our end-of-the-year evaluation. Those aren't the only times that we're going to hear really about progress in the goals, because everything that you see in these goals are going to be integrated into the kinds of reports that the board gets, occasionally, some of the decisions we make in terms of if we're purchasing curriculum or, or talking about the budget. One of the things that you did mention at your evaluation was to make the availability of the DISC plans more available to the public. Can you speak to that again?
Yeah, as Eric Johnson just mentioned, we have a really important meeting next week with teams from all of our schools. We have got people hot, hot and heavy finalizing those plans, as he also described, right now. By the end of August, we will definitely have finalized plans for all those areas. And so, I think that's the most appropriate point to make them available. Eric mentioned making them available to school communities. We'll also make them available on the soon-to-be redesigned RPS website and share them with board members as well. So, yeah, those would be transparent. It is important to note that my goals also include several system change initiatives that are not in school skip plans, because we have other stuff going on that is not in a school skip. So, one of the goals, for instance, is our start times work. We, the board has approved the move to new start times for the following school year. We have some big implementation work to get that done. And so, that's one of the goals that I'm proposing I be measured against. Similarly, we have got some work on community partnerships and leadership development that is also rolling out this year, even though that's not a skip goal, it's a system goal for us. So, those would be... So those would be part of the board's evaluation of me for the current, coming school year.
All right, and this will come back to us on August 15. Our next item is 8.1. It is an action item, the approval of the 2020, the 2023 referendum proposal. Just to review, previously, the board discussed the results of community referendum surveys on December 6, 2022, and June 27, 2023. At our study session, the board asked the superintendent to develop a referendum proposal, which we discussed at our July 25 regular meeting. So tonight, it comes to us as an action item, and I will read the resolution, ask for a motion and second, and if received, we'll open the floor for information and discussion. Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district 535 does hereby approve placement of a capital projects technology levy authorization question on the ballot and calls for a special election to be held on November 7, 2023 to provide funds for the purchase, installation, support, and maintenance of software and technology equipment. Second. There has been a motion and a second. Superintendent, any updates to information from the last meeting?
No new information, and there is a detailed set of background information that, as always, is available on our school district, school board website. I would just reiterate, this is a very targeted proposal that is focused on an area of our work that is, is, is critical to advancing the goals of our strategic plan, and that's technology, which we know is integrated into everything we do, which we saw with striking clarity last fall as we had to take all of our technology systems down during a ransomware attack, is integrated into everything else we do. But it would not be somewhat more than $10 million a year only for technology. Of that $10,145,000, approximately $7 million is currently funding technology services that could then be reallocated with a dedicated funding source to support other core mission, core aspects of our teaching and learning mission, such as multi-tiered systems of support in literacy. This does, however, also provide us with targeted funding for some critical needs in technology. School safety would be priority number one, enhancing both the number and quality of cameras in our school, exploring new solutions that use artificial intelligence to identify and defend against weapons in schools, enhancing our cybersecurity footprint to make sure that even though we maintained the standard of protection for school districts last year, we up the game in making sure that our data for students and staff is safe, maintaining the one-to-one funding devices that we've been able to move to with federal funding during COVID. The, the last thing we would ever want to do is take a step back where we're taking a tablet away from a kid who is beginning to experience deeper learning and academic progress infused with technology. And then a whole array of solutions that will advance the goals of our strategic plan, from tutoring software and mathematics that we began working with during our Summer of Discovery project, to software that helps kids actually starting in elementary school begin planning for post-secondary education and a career. So a significant advancement for our school district, both in the core academic agenda and in some targeted support for technology, that is also a driver of improvement in our work. And I'm hopeful that the board will put this on the ballot and that we will be doing the very best we can to provide accurate information to the citizens of Rochester to help them evaluate the degree to which they feel this is an appropriate investment to make in our kids.
Director Barlow.
Question regarding language. Earlier, well, separate from what we may have heard earlier, is it appropriate to have included on the referendum any reference to the most recent legislative action that would empower us to extend this particular levy if it were approved? Is it appropriate to have that, legally required to, or any thoughts regarding that?
Yeah, Director Barlow, I appreciate that. It actually would not be allowed. We, the language that we've received that you have here is from the very tightly constrained language that we're allowed to use, that we got from our, our advisors who made clear what is acceptable ballot language. The reference that you're making to the operating referendum is an important one that we will be providing information to the community on, but it is separate from this referendum. The school board does have the authority to either go back to the voters for an operating referendum at a different amount than the one that exists, or to, by act of the board, renew that operating referendum. As you know, I am recommending that this board not take action on that decision at this time and instead initially prioritize this technology levy that would, as I've tried to describe, play an important role in advancing our strategic plan. I would then, depending on the results of the technology level levy, make a recommendation to you on the best approach with that operating referendum. It could easily be put on the ballot in 20, well, not easily, it could be, nothing's easy, put up, be put on the ballot in 2024 or 2025, or the board could take its own action on that operating referendum at that time.
Thank you. And I was clear that was for the technology and not for the existing one. Thank you.
I guess just also to clarify, this type of capital project technology levy cannot be renewed by a board action. So only an operating levy could be renewed by board action. So what we're putting on the ballot, regardless of whether the language says it or not, we could not renew it on our own, should it pass?
And in fact, the authority for the operating levy is only an existing levy at the same amount for the same duration one time. So this is not a continuing authority that school boards will have. Unlike city councils or county commissioners, it is a one-time opportunity for school districts to consider.
Board members, any other comment? Are we ready? Oh, Director Cook.
Actually, I did have, I did have a question about the, the, I, I think the information that's been provided has been wonderful as far as how this funding source would be used within the district. I was wondering if there's any information that we could, that we could share about how the amount is calculated for our district? I was looking at the statutory authority and understood that it's sort of a calculated amount, the ability to levy for this type of capital projects amount is calculated based on the number of pupil units and some multipliers and some other factors. And the, the proposed referendum language references the maximum amount of 4.467% times the net tax capacity of the school district. Is there a layman's version of how to, how to go from that, like, calculated amount that involves some factors multiplied by the average daily membership and so on, and how that translates into this 4.467 times the net tax capacity of the school district? And why is that the maximum amount?
I'm going to, thank you, Director Cook. I'm going to give John Carlson an opportunity to jump in here with a more sophisticated level, but I would say the, the simplest way I think of it is it's a combination of the number of kids in your district and the tax capacity of your community. And it is a pre-established formula that gives us relatively little flexibility, depending on where you want to set the bar. And so Rochester, as we know, is fortunate to be a thriving community. And so I don't say this by way of gloating, but at least the current plans, and I think maybe it has been approved in Duluth, are to do exactly what we are, what I'm recommending to you, and because of the tax base, it would generate significantly less funding for Duluth Public Schools. And so it has a lot to do with the tax, the net tax capacity of your community that determines the actual level of funding that would be available to the school district. So that's my less-than-John Carlson-level explanation of how that gets determined.
Yeah, so the, the capital projects referendum can be set at whatever percentage you want. And so we came up with needing $10,150,000 per year of funding, and then it's just backward math into figuring out what that percentage is of the net tax capacity.
So do you know why the proposed referendum languages, language references the maximum amount? Is there a significance to that maximum language?
So what it's saying is, as the net tax capacity grows in the district, it usually goes up a little bit every year. When MDE gives the levy authority, the exact dollars, they'll take net tax capacity times 4.467%, and that will be the revenue for the next school year.
So the 4.467% never changes, but the net tax capacity amount could increase?
Yes. The net tax.
Then the dollar amount in the end could grow beyond the $10,150,000 in future years?
That's correct. So I have seen the net tax capacity go down one time. That was probably around 2009, '10, somewhere in there, but otherwise, it's gone up every year. And so the 4.467 is the number that's fixed, and then the dollar will change every year based on what the net tax capacity is.
And am I right that it's the $10.15 million that is the calculated amount of capital projects for our district based on what last year's numbers, or?
So that was simply, we've looked at kind of a 10-year run of what we've been spending on technology, but really focused in on the last three years and what we think we need to replace all these devices, to do the upgrades, to do the things that Superintendent Pecow was explaining.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Director McLaughlin.
I just maybe have a way to clarify that in my mind. So when we're looking at the documented symbol here, the approval of the capital project levy for technology, the words maximum amount modify the calculation, not modifying the number, the 4.467.
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you understood it.
And just like any levy that we have, when it comes to, to you in September and then again in December, you could always go less than that. You, what it's just saying is you can't go more than the maximum of 4.467 times whatever the net tax.
But maximum amount is not modifying the 4.467, it's modifying the whole calculation.
That's right.
Okay.
That does clear it up. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Or since we are ready for a vote? It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution has been approved. Thank you, board members. Item 9.1 is our ABCD updated. Are there any items a board member would like to bring for consideration on a future agenda? Hearing none. Our upcoming, upcoming board meeting dates are August 8 at 5:00 p.m., which is a study session, August 12 at 8:00 a.m., we have a school board retreat, August 15 at 5:30 p.m., we have a regular meeting, August 22 at 5:00 p.m., we have a study session, and September 5 at 5:30 p.m., we have a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:32.